Here by call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, May 20th, 2024. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Eton.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end of the dais, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who is on my left at the other end of the dais. We'll have other staff and guests participating in the meeting, who will introduce as those agenda items come up in the agenda this evening. I would note for members of the public, if you need a copy of tonight's agenda, there are extra copies on the table under the clock in the back of the room by the back door. We also do have one master set of all the meeting materials in a three-ring binder, which is accessible to the public as well. If you have a cellphone, we would ask that you silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. And with that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda this evening is approval of tonight's agenda. And as always, we'll start by checking with our city manager as to any changes from a staff perspective this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's one item, 10D, which is on the consent agenda, approved professional services agreement for water, meat, and vault project. We need to spend a little bit more time on that professional services agreement with SEH, so we'll be bringing that back to the June 3 meeting, so you can take that off completely for consideration tonight.
All right, very good. And are there any council requested changes to tonight's agenda, or council member requested items to be removed from consent for separate consideration? Does not appear to be the case. We'll do a quick check with folks in the audience this evening. We just talked about our consent agenda, which is Section 10 at the bottom of the first page. These are a series of items that are taken up usually as a single motion, and they're at the end of the meeting, and so there's kind of a, you know, a limited opportunity for discussion and questions. But if anybody is here for one of those items this evening, this would be a chance to let us know, and we can then take that, take up that item earlier in the meeting. Once again, this is our consent items, Section 10, items A through G, although we noted that item D is not going to be taken up this evening. If you're here for one of those items and wish to make sure and have a chance to speak to it or ask a question of the council, this is your chance to let us know, and we'll make sure and consider that earlier in the meeting for you. Anyone here for an item in Section 10? Does not appear to be the case. With that, then, the next thing to do would be to pass our agenda this evening. As noted, we have an amendment from staff to remove item 10D from consideration this evening at all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Oh, moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. That brings us then to our first opportunity for public comment. This is a general opportunity for members of the public to speak to the council. As we take up agenda items as the evening goes on, there will be a chance for members of the public to speak on those items as well. But we do also, at the beginning of each meeting, provide an opportunity for general public comment. This is a chance for folks to speak on items that either may be of interest to people in the community, or may be related to city business but aren't being considered by the council this evening. I'll check first to see if there is anyone here who wishes to speak under general public comment this evening. Does not appear to be the case. That will save us all, me having to go through all the procedures for that, and we'll save that for the next agenda item where somebody is here to speak. With that, then, we'll move on to recognitions and donations. We have a couple of proclamations this evening that we'll take up. I'll read each one, and we'll have a motion from the council to approve. The first is a proclamation in relation to LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and reads as follows. Whereas the city of Roseville supports the LGBTQIA+ community and honors their many contributions to the health of the city, and remains committed to treating all people with fairness and respect. And whereas in 1993, Minnesota became the first state in the nation to outlaw both sexual orientation and gender discrimination in the field of employment, housing, and public accommodations. And whereas in 2013, the state of Minnesota legalized same-sex marriage. And whereas in 2021, the city of Roseville became the ninth municipality in Minnesota to ban the practice of conversion therapy on LGBTQIA+ youth and vulnerable adults, practice now banned by the state of Minnesota as of 2023. And whereas, Roseville continues the tradition for communities across America to recognize their LGBTQIA+, which is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and ally residents during the month of June, and recognizes the plus symbol for the inclusion of all identities. And whereas LGBTQIA+ people, as the rainbow flag symbolizes, come from every group, religion, ethnicity, age, occupation, ability or disability, size, and shape. And whereas, members of the Roseville LGBTQIA+ community have always served as valuable members of our country in every capacity, as homeowners, taxpayers, members of the military, business owners, parents, and employees, among others. And whereas, it is important to recognize that we are all part of the same community. And whereas, LGBTQIA+ residents, LGBTQIA+ residents have enriched the diverse community of Roseville through their participation in city government, in the arts, religious, and civil institutions, education, and community organizations. And whereas, the city of Roseville believes that all people deserve to be protected from bullying, harassment, discrimination, and health disparities, and convey a clear message that intolerance is not welcome in our community. And whereas, the LGBTQIA+ community allies, including the Roseville Air High School student groups, provide support and encouragement to Roseville youth with the assistance of the Roseville School District staff and administration. And whereas, the city of Roseville affirms our commitment to promoting full inclusion and equality for every resident in our city, therefore be it resolved, the city of Roseville declares June 2024 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the city of Roseville.
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Eton, and seconded by Councilmember Graff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. The second proclamation this evening is a proclamation in relation to National Gun Violence Awareness Day and Month. That's June 7, specifically 2024, as well as the month of June. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, according to an analysis of international cause of death data, Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people on average in 28 other high-income countries. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's data indicates there are 120 Americans killed by gun violence every day, along with more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are 17,673 gun homicides in the U.S. every year. And whereas, data from the CDC indicated that in 2022, the leading cause of death of children under 18 in the nation was firearms, with 4,603 children dying in gun-related incidents that year. And whereas, analysis of CDC data shows that Black and Indigenous and people of color or BIPOC individuals are disproportionately impacted by gun violence, with Black children and teens having the highest gun death rate among the nation's population at nearly four times the rate of white children, and Hispanic and Indigenous people dying in gun violence at twice the rate of white people. And whereas, the CDC data and hospital admission and discharge data show that Minnesota has, on average, 510 gun deaths and 1,174 non-fatal gun injuries every year, including 132 homicides and 319 injuries due to criminal acts. And whereas, Roseville experiences gun violence, including, as we all may remember, on April 5, 2022, an incident on West Lake Owasso Boulevard, in which an individual recklessly fired at surrounding homes and cars, and eventually shot and wounded Roseville Police Officer Ryan Ducksbury, who has recovered from his injuries, thankfully. And whereas, Roseville and all cities across the nation are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, including integration of social services and mental health support into public safety work, holding a gun, a free gun turn-in event for community members to dispose of unwanted guns safely, and providing gun locks free of charge to allow residents to better secure their guns in their own homes. And whereas, protecting the public safety in the community is one of the highest responsibilities of the city. And whereas, upholding Second Amendment rights can and should go hand in hand with promoting safe and responsible gun ownership and use, including limiting gun access for persons with dangerous histories. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the city of Roseville renews its commitment to end gun violence, and we pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. And be it further resolved, the city of Roseville declares the month of June 2024 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and June 7 specifically to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Eton. Any discussion on that motion?
I'm thankful to see this back again this year, and sadly, we need to update information every year. Things change, and sadly, there are new things to add to the list, but I appreciate the acknowledgement.
Thank you, Councilmembers Strawn. And thank you to members of the community who continue to work in this area, and are advocates, and some of whom are here this evening. We appreciate all that work as well, and the work that really everybody in the community can and should and is doing in regards to gun safety in their own lives. With that, we've got the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that proclamation is also approved. Thank you again, everyone. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We have three business items, excuse me, four business items, A through D under Section 7. The first is item 7A, which is to receive a Visit Roseville presentation regarding National Travel and Tourism Week. And we have the head of Visit Roseville, Julie Wern, with us this evening to bring this item before us, and we look forward to hearing from Ms. Wern this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, bring it up. My name is Julie Wern, and I'm here to welcome you to National Travel and Tourism Week, and tell you why it is so important for the United States, the state of Minnesota, and Roseville. In the United States, travel is a $2.8 trillion industry that supports nearly 15 million American jobs while fueling other important industries like manufacturing, healthcare, and agriculture, all which depend on travel to generate business, spur innovation, and support education. In Minnesota, visitors spend $16 billion, but using a new tourism economics model, Explore Minnesota was also able to capture the $9.7 billion in indirect spending through sectors like finance, insurance, real estate, and business services. In Roseville, hotel revenue alone accounted for over $34 million, which is based on an occupancy of 60% and an average daily rate of $110.76. Visitor spend, which means shopping, dining, and attractions, based on our Zartical Performance Daily Insights, gives us an estimated spend of $103 per visit on an average of a two-day stay, which equals $51.50. And I think that's a conservative number, because the high was $159, which would make that $16 million figure above almost $49.4 million, or $79 per day. But I was conservative, because we know how salespeople like to overinflate, so, you know, I kept it on the low number. But I think it's higher. We ask people in our hospitality industry to nominate employees who go above and beyond in their place of work, industry professionals, and unsung heroes who demonstrate pride and commitment to their job, who go that extra mile in providing service to visitors, thereby enhancing our visitors' experience and the desire to return to Roseville. The response was great. The individuals who won are thrilled, and their employees are even more so. We are posting our hospitality hotshots on our Facebook page with winners from Key's Cafe, Doubletree Hotel, Home Two Suites, Mokwa Coffee, Hampton Inn, Ben Bruce stillery, and Smash Park. Sunday's instant Instagram giveaway was for Minnesota State Fair tickets, and during the week, we'll be doing giveaways for the St. Paul Saints, Taste of Rose Fest, Back to the 50s in Minnesota United tickets. And we'll get to that donut giveaway in a second. We had Senator Marty do a video for us.
Hello, fellow Minnesotans. I'm Senator John Marty. Tourism isn't just about fun and adventure. It's a powerhouse industry contributing over $16 billion to Minnesota's economy, and it touches all of us, creating 230,000 jobs, and it makes life in Minnesota more enjoyable than ever. So let's celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week. Explore all the wonders that Minnesota and the wonderful city of Roseville have to offer. If you want to find out where to go, get our new Roseville Tourism Guide, which has lots of ideas on what to see and do, and where to eat, and where to visit. Thanks.
He improvised that last bit, picking up the visitor guide. He was very into it.
Hello.
And yet, really, it was so good. We're doing it again. And this one, which I'll show you, was sent to over 46,000 people in the 55113 and 55126 zip codes. We had over 9,000 views, and that's an average, it was an average of 19.4%, and the industry average is 20%. So if everybody shows up for a donut giveaway on this one.
Hey there, Roseville. As we celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week, Visit Roseville has some exciting plans for you. Swing by the Oval on Wednesday, May 22, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. for a coffee and donut giveaway courtesy of our local Dunkin'. But that's not all. We're hosting Facebook contests all week long with daily ticket giveaways for Saints games, Minnesota United matches, and more. Plus, join us in honoring our hard-working hospitality community with our Hospitality Hot Shots Awards, highlighting workers in our industry. Remember, tourism isn't just about fun. It's a $16 billion industry in Minnesota, supporting 229,000 jobs, almost 28,000 of those in Ramsey County, and it's vital for our economy. I bet you didn't know that every household in Minnesota would need to chip in an additional $993 in taxes without the revenue from our visitors. Whether you're a resident or a visitor, I encourage you to pick up our visitor guide, explore our beautiful city, and experience the wonders of our public art project, Roseville in Bloom. You will find a site map of all our roses on our website. So come on out and support your local hospitality community. After all, it all starts with a visit.
We sent that out last week, and like I said, everybody shows up for a donut on Wednesday, which we hope they do. We'll be giving out a lot. And Pat, we have a special presentation for you.
Oh, wow. Pass those down.
It's all in hospitality.
These are the donuts that will be given out free to the public.
Hardest family ever in the city council.
You can have those.
There's one for everybody up there.
Yeah, one for everybody, right?
There's one for everyone.
Listen, young lady, you like twitching.
You take a look at them, though.
Open it up. Oh, our toast, dude.
Oh, very nice.
Ooh, this smells good, dude.
Hardly could eat them, they're so expensive.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you very much for allowing me time to present this, because it did, we, we haven't done this for a while, and I think it's really important to highlight our hospitality community and honor the workers in it. And the hospitality hotshots is going over big, so I think we're going to, I'm sure, add to it next year. So we're pretty excited about it.
That's great. And we should, we should note that Visit Roseville is an organization that's affiliated with the city. It's funded by local lodging tax dollars, so hotel tax and motel tax in Roseville goes towards Visit Roseville to help promote and do all these activities you saw featured in the video. And actually, one of the requirements of the ordinance creating the lodging tax was that Visit Roseville has to present to the city council each year. So maybe this is that. I'm not sure 100%, but.
I'd probably do a little more in the actual presentation.
Okay, you'll be back, in other words. All right, great, great. Well, thank you again for all the work that Visit Roseville does. Thank you to our board member for representing the city on the board very well, and we look forward to you coming back and reporting on the results at your next presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was Wednesday morning, 7 to 9 at the Oval. Everyone be there for your donuts. All right. That then brings us to our second business item this evening, and that is to consider a request to perform an abatement of unresolved code violations at 3119 Mildred Avenue. And we have our codes official, David England, with us this evening to bring this item before us. Mr. England, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As described, this is a request to perform an abatement at 3119 Mildred. The code violations in question are two vehicles that are unlicensed, inoperable, and one is parked on unimproved surface. This was originally scheduled to be heard by you on April 22, but on that date, the homeowner did contact me, asking for a two-week extension to the abatement request. That was granted, and it was pulled from council consideration. We have not seen any progress since then. We did repost it for council consideration tonight. We, I did hear from the homeowner at 425 this evening, asking for another extension until this Saturday, as he thought he would have these vehicles sold to possibly a neighbor by this weekend. I told him I would bring this to your attention and ask how you would like to move forward with this abatement request. Both of these vehicles have been in this spot, one for at least five years, the other one for at least four. This truck here does have all flat tires, is parked on unimproved surface. Vehicle next to it, the Saturn, is, looks and appears operable, except for the tabs. So it's not really as much of a concern. We have offered the property owner numerous resources and options for resources that he has not taken advantage of yet for not only these concerns, but there were some other property maintenance issues that we're trying to work with him on. But this is the, the request for you tonight is to prove an abatement, to remove the vehicles from the property. And I'm not sure if the property owner's here or not. It's been difficult to get ahold of him and actually get a conversation with him.
We'll check if there is a representative of the property owner at 3119 Mildred here this evening. It does not appear to be the case. We've got the request before us, which once again is to authorize the abatement, and the note that the owner has, or the, I guess, the property owner has requested an extension to allow the potential sale of vehicles this weekend, as we understand it.
Yes.
Right. Are there any questions from council for staff on this item? Councilmember Graff.
If I remember right, it was stated earlier that they would be sold at another deadline. Is that accurate, or am I not remembering that correctly?
He thought a neighbor may wish to purchase them by this Saturday. I had asked him if he could get ahold of that neighbor to email me in something or make some assertion to that. I have my doubts, but I just wanted to make sure I relate his request to you.
Was it promised earlier in another notification, too?
He had stated on April 22 that he was planning to sell them.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if he knows exactly what path to take to sell them.
Okay.
But we haven't seen any motion yet on that.
All right. Any other questions from the council for staff? All right, we've, we've got the request before us. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this matter, the consideration of a request to abate the code violations on the property at 3119 Mildred, which would mean basically impounding the vehicles, I would imagine?
We would hire a towing contractor to remove them from the, from the property.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this particular request for abatement by the city? Seeing no one, then we'll proceed to council consideration. We've got the request before us. Is there a motion from the council?
I would make the motion. Second.
All right, and this is to authorize the abatement by the city at this time? Got it. And there was a second from Councilmember Eton. All right. With that, we've got the motion before us. Councilmember Graff is the maker of the motion. Discussion on the motion?
I think that we've made, Mr. England has made very good faith attempts to, to address this situation. We have to move forward as a city.
All right. As the secondary, Councilmember Eton, anything to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Right. Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, with that, we've got the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That motion is approved. That abatement is authorized with immediate effect. The second item before, or the third item, I should say, I'm losing track of my business items here. Item C is to consider a resolution approving the vacation of a utility easement at 571 Roseland Avenue. And we have our Public Works Director, Jesse Freihammer, with us this evening to bring this item before us. Mr. Freihammer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a really, really brief presentation. So back in November of last year, council did vacate this right away, but we did retain easements. This was part of our vacation where we've gone through a variety of.
If I could just note in the control room on our screens up on the dais here, we're not seeing the presentation. There we go. All right, thank you.
So anyway, this was one of the vacations that we did, but we did retain utility easements over this. Since that time, we have had a petition from the adjacent property owners to vacate those utility easements. We did retain. Staff did review that, but there are no utilities currently in the easement. There is an undeveloped parcel to the north that could use it, but there's also access through the Kent Street right away to the north. So staff is supportive of vacating this easement. So with that, like I said, staff says no needs to keep this, so staff would recommend council open up a public hearing, and then approve the resolution vacating the utility easements at 571 Roseland Avenue. I should add, since this is a petition vacation, we only need a majority, unlike the, the previous ones, which needed the supermajority. So with that, I can open up to any questions.
All right. Are there any questions for staff from members of the council on this end? All right. Would note, this is a public hearing, as required by state statute, for vacation of utility easements. And I'll double-check with Mr. Trudgeon in terms of published notice and availability of an affidavit of publication.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Published and legal mail notices have been provided for this public hearing. Legal notices appeared in the city's legal newspaper, The Pioneer Press, on May 3 and 10, 2024. Mail notices were sent on May 9, 2024. Adjectives of publishing and mailing are available in the office of the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. And I would note, too, as part of the public hearing, before we open it up to general public comment, if the petitioner is here and wishes to speak to his petition, this would be an opportunity to do that as well. It is completely optional. If you feel that staff has presented adequately your case, that's fine, too, but you have this opportunity, if you'd like, to come up and speak.
Everybody at the city's been great. Brian's was great, Jesse was great. It's just, it's cleaning up the paperwork for the title.
All right. Noted that the petitioner notes that it is primarily a paperwork matter to clean up the title, and we can understand that for sure, and that working with the city has been a positive experience in all the people involved, so that will be noted for the record. Is there anyone else from the public who may wish to speak to this particular request to vacate the utility easement as outlined in the presentation? Seeing no one, then, we've got the request before us, and I believe there is a resolution required for this. There is an attachment with a resolution to approve the vacation of the utility easement at that address.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Eton to approve the resolution authorizing the vacation of that easement. And I would note that upon adoption of the resolution, there still are some steps that have to happen before that finally happens with the county, but that is all outlined in the materials. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Schroeder.
I'll just straight forward.
All right. As the secondary, Councilmember Eton?
No.
Other discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That resolution is approved. That vacation of easement is authorized, and good luck with getting the paperwork all straightened out. And with that, I'm going to, just as a matter of privilege, note that we had a couple of folks that missed public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, and wanted to make an announcement of an upcoming event in the city. And so we'll take a moment away from our normal agenda here and go back to general public comment, and welcome the representatives of Roseville's Juneteenth celebration. Come on up and, and let us know what, what is the announcement about the event this year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Remember that one.
Keith, you're good. Yeah. Well, appreciate you all giving us the time to come up and adjusting, to give us, we honor, we'll honor those three minutes as well. So Keith Allen, resident and employee of ML Fairview, one of the sponsors for the Juneteenth celebration along with you all. And so we're here just to read a quick statement, and I'll let Antion.
Yeah, Antion Javi, member of the planning committee for Juneteenth Celebration Roseville.
So just honored, honored to be here with you all today, and thank you for adjusting, adjusting your time for us. So part of the, I am a member of the Roseville Juneteenth Committee, and for the last couple of years, on behalf of this committee, I, I wanted to take just a few moments here to express our gratitude and sincere thank you to all who helped bring this event to fruition. It's been many years that this event has been going on. It's been an uplifting event. It's been my introduction to the city of Roseville as a resident, and just, and it's been a great opportunity to bring, to collaborate and bring community and uplift community together, especially as an African-American male, where not to me, my neighbors look like me, but an event in our wonderful park where I can be uplifted and, and see my, see people and their businesses as well. So this planning for 2024 celebrations literally started the day after the last event happened. We have grown, our committee has doubled in size over the past couple of years, and wanted to give a huge shout out and thank you to the city of Roseville and, and the, and the partnership of hosting this event. It wouldn't have grown to be the success it was without you all's partnership and one of the greatest parks in our state of Minnesota, in Central Park. This event also has many sponsorships that have grown over the years and wanted to give a special shout out to our very own Roseville Area Community Foundation with, with this event and keeping this event, event for happening and making it possible. It was very important for us to make sure that even if a little kid on his bike came to this event, they didn't have to pay for something to eat. And so sponsorship has been very important to bringing and uplifting our young people, as well as that park. As you all know, kids are riding by all the time, and many guests who came to Juneteenth last year didn't know what Juneteenth was, and so had that magical question of curiosity and asked, what is Juneteenth? And that was all ages, and they were all welcomed to this event. With the experiences of joy and unity and pride associated with Juneteenth, it, it shouldn't just be for just one day. I, I urge you as, as leaders in our community to do, let this be a remembrance throughout the other 364 days of the year, and to encourage self-education, volunteering to, to support worthy causes, to make donations and educational activities, working to uplift and empower black community, empowering our black community here in Roseville. These actions wouldn't take, have taken years, would, would not taken throughout the years, and have profound lasting impact on us all. This leads us to building a thriving community. Roseville can be that place. Let this, let this be, let us be that city that, that is ally for, and advocacy for racial justice and equality. I want us, you all, to please use your voice and your talents and your resources to speak out against systematic racism and to support policy that, and initiatives that promotes equity and inclusion, building genuine relations with our black and brown community, individuals and families, and businesses. It goes a long way in fostering a strong and lasting sense of community and understanding. I want to thank you all for listening to us. We have flyers that Antion have here, and we know you, we might have them electronically. Please share those with your constituents and other residents as well, and partners as well. So thank you.
All right. And if you could mention the, the date and time again?
Yeah, so it will be Saturday, June 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
At Central Park in Roseville.
At Central Park.
Great. Well, thank you for being here to announce that. Councilmember Schroeder.
I think it'd be nice to take in a moment to acknowledge one of your board members, planning members, Donald Eubanks, who passed away on March 17th of this year. I'm sure his profound wisdom is felt as you continue on, but he was definitely an important part of the planning for this event over the years, and I think it'd be nice to take a moment to honor him.
Thank you for pointing that out. And it should be noted also that Mr. Eubanks was very active in the Imagine Roseville events shortly after the shooting of Philando Castile, and was very instrumental, I think, in bringing people together for those, those efforts that, that were kind of grassroots in, in the city at that time. And so it's important to acknowledge his long involvement in the community in Roseville, but also more broadly in the Twin Cities and, and this region. So thank you for mentioning that, and we certainly honor his memory.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we look forward to seeing everyone on the 15th in Central Park.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, then we'll return to our regularly scheduled program here. And that brings us to our final business item this evening, item 7D, which is to sort of an introduction to the review of fire department staffing in Roseville. And we have our Chief Brosnahan, as well as our Assistant Fire Chief Scholstrom with us this evening to bring this item before us. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm just gonna pull this up here. Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate you taking the time to have us on the agenda tonight to kind of talk through kind of our current experiences with our staffing model, response strain, and things that we're having at the fire department. And we'd like to kind of open the conversation, as the mayor pointed out, kind of what the potential future could look like and options that we might have before us. And so kind of tonight, our primary objective is to kind of work through, you know, the, the different things that we're experiencing as an organization with kind of the, the primary goal in mind is, is our call volume trends, our growth in just a matter of a few years that we've had to experience, as well as showing some comparisons with different peers, different peer agencies, seeing kind of their call volume trends, their staffing models, and making comparisons, of course, with us, and then challenges we're seeing with response due to demand and overlapping calls. So we're getting ourselves in positions where we're either stretched and being delayed to different emergencies because of the types of calls and the amount of calls that are coming in and their timing. So tonight, I'd like to open the conversation with council through the data we have and some case studies that we'll, we'll kind of talk through to talk about the next steps for, for fire department staffing. Essentially, the current and annual 911 demand growth is outpacing our available resources and outpacing our current staffing model. And so I'd like to receive permission from council tonight, as we work through things here, to enter into a staffing study to better understand for myself, and of course, for the fire department, as well as for city leadership, the most appropriate level of staffing for the city of our size, our call volume, our demand and our complexities. And then, of course, using that staffing study in the future to help guide staffing decisions, hiring decisions, as well as open the opportunity to continue looking at opportunities like a safer grant that we've done in the past. Thank you.
So just to start off the evening, we'll talk a little bit about where we are right now, where we've been a little bit. So right now, as we stand, our maximum on-duty staffing is eight firefighters. Our minimums are at six, and we're gonna talk a little bit about how we get to six and eight, and why those numbers have significance. But having a, a maximum staffing of eight doesn't really mean we have eight people on duty all the time. More realistically, based off of time off, injuries, things like that that come up and, and impact us, we have right around 6.3 firefighters on duty on average. So that puts us much closer to our minimum number of personnel on duty, which puts, as the pictures show, basically two firefighters in each one of the, the three fire trucks that you see. So our engine company and our two medic response vehicles at minimum staffing have just two people assigned to each one of those apparatus. And so that puts us in the position of talking about, you know, why, why does that matter? How is the right number found? And we'll talk a little bit about that as we get a little further into it, but we're trying to keep ourselves away from some of the challenges that we had pre-phase two. And I think some folks in here tonight might recognize the phase two that we went through, and so you might have a little bit of an understanding and some history with where we were at back prior to phase two coming into play. And so we're gonna talk a little bit about how that call volume has started to impact us in a very similar way again, and then also talk a little bit about how our current demand for 911 response has impacted our ability to address fire inspections, multifamily licensing, and some of those components as well.
And if you have questions at any point, please feel free to, to ask. So this one, we're gonna talk about call volume trends. So the bar, the bar graph here kind of tends to speak for itself, but we've seen exponential growth over the last three years, especially more than a 22% increase from 2021 into, through 2023. This growth is not just in EMS calls, but our, our fire calls, our service calls are also on, on, on the rise over the last couple of years. In all, in just the past five years, our department's call volume has grown over 40%. This is pretty unique in, in most areas. Ourselves and Maplewood tend to be kind of on a similar path as far as our overall growth, but there are several fire departments throughout the metro and even in Ramsey County that have been a little bit stagnant with their call volume. So this is fairly unique to Roseville and, and a few other areas immediately around us. If we were to look even further back, you know, and I know this because I was here with the, my predecessor, the former chief, when we were going through phase two items, we didn't anticipate the call volume growth that we're, we're actually experiencing. Historically, going, leading up to about 2017, 2018, so prior to that, we were seeing 2% to 4% call volume increases. We did not ever see, see 8%, 12%, and even 13% call volume increases, which we have over the last several years. So really, it was a, a call volume growth that was, was never anticipated, and now we're experiencing it. And so also note, 2024 is currently about 10% to 12% ahead of this exact same time in 2023. So if we keep on that same path, we could have about 7,500 to 7,600 total emergencies in 2024. This is our department comparison piece. So this table represents staffing numbers and call volumes of our peer agencies. Essentially, why are they peers? These departments were selected based off of size, so their overall population, their city size, department size, and the similarity of services to Roseville Fire. So all these agencies have full-time staffing, run full EMS, have similar call volume levels as we do. We didn't find in a, a table like this, it'd be, you know, prudent to maybe have outside agencies like a Forest Lake or Amada Medei or Maple Grove. This doesn't quite fit the similar services. And I know that there were some questions on other peers that might be out there. I reached out this, over the weekend, to a few other agencies, and so I do have some of those numbers I could add as well. But if we were to walk through each column, we, we kind of had the first column where you talk about the total shift personnel, so total firefighters or full-time firefighters that you have on staff, your minimum staffing on duty, and so Chief Scholstrom alluded to this, our number is six, and then, of course, these agencies have varying levels between essentially six and 10. Our maximum staffing on duty, ours is eight compared to any levels of eight, nine, 10, 11 across the board. And the staffed response units, that is maybe unique to each fire department, but this could be an ambulance, it could be a medical response vehicle, it could be an engine, it could be a ladder. For purposes of the table, it, it doesn't matter, meaning as long as it's a staffed unit, that's part of your day-to-day operation and is staffed on the daily, it counts towards this. And so there could be a different variety of, of vehicles. And then, of course, their 2023 call volume. So the goal of this table is essentially twofold. One, to simply show a comparison of call volume and staffing models amongst multiple agencies. But second, and maybe more importantly, to show the dispersment of workload amongst firefighters and staffed response vehicles of, of our peers, as well as looking at our 2018 selves, which is the bottom row, of course. So we'll break down kind of the, the two items that were to the right of the black column on the previous slide, of the calls per on-duty firefighter and the calls per staffed unit. So first, with total calls per on-duty firefighter, this is based off of minimum staffing. So I took the minimum staffing level of each of these organizations and took it, you know, divided by their, and divided their call volume by that. There's a variety of different ways we maybe could have done this. Usually, understanding your day-to-day exact staffing isn't something we can necessarily get from some of our peer agencies. Neil was able to define our 6.3, but I at least found that the minimum staffing would at least be the common denominator, that all of us can, can work off of. Everybody has to have a minimum number to at least be able to run their day-to-day operation. So as it currently sits, and with 2023 numbers remarkably higher than all of our peers, our closest peer is, is Maplewood at this time. They have 886 per on-duty firefighter, so we have about a 30% increase over Maplewood. If we actually look at our 2018 self, we're at about a 92.7% of where we're at in 2018, so only giving ourselves about an 8% difference or relief that our additional staffing provided. Again, I think that contribution is totally due to the, the increased call volume. So the additional staffing for phase two and the safer grant, while vital to our staffing due to the increase in call volume, really shows overall very little difference or relief compared to where we're at five or six years ago.
So taking a look at this from a calls per staffed unit, so this looks at the number of staffed units based off of the overall calls. When our transition occurred in 2021, going from our five-to-eight-person staffing model, we were at roughly 2,082 calls per staffed unit. So you can see, over the course of just the last few years, we've sort of climbed the bar graph closer to our 2018 self than we, than we are to our 2021 transition year. Our closest peer being Maplewood presently, they'll be adding an additional unit, so this is gonna be starting for them, tentatively speaking, in 2025, but they'll be adding a fifth staffed apparatus. So for them, their per-unit call volume will transition down to roughly 1,600 calls per unit, just to give some perspective of where they're going. And they have a strategic plan that's helping guide them down that path to bring that additional piece of equipment online and have it staffed 24/7 as well. So this, you know, what does this mean in terms of call volume, and how does it have an impact, right? There's the impact of we're having delayed response, we're unable to make it to emergencies, but there is also sort of the not visible impact that it has as it relates to our crews being able to conduct their on-duty training. So our firefighters, every day they come to work are doing training to help better themselves, help meet the requirements of state statute, and be prepared for whatever it is they're gonna come across. And the more frequent that that is interrupted, obviously, the less prepared sort of that, that kind of connection happens. So those interruptions not only impact our 911 response, but they also impact the things that the firefighters do to be prepared for that 911 response. And I think it's important for us to sort of understand that as a component of the overall impact that we're seeing and experiencing, too. So as we look at resource utilization, many of our calls require more than one unit response. And so we think of 6,907 calls for service last year, so that was 609, 6,907 times that we had an incident to respond to. That's not necessarily representative of how busy each apparatus was. So when we do a calculation, when we look at our data, last year, we had 8,553 unit responses. So that would include calls where more than one of our staffed unit responds. That's where you start to get that increase in unit responses. So now you see we're 8,500 and climbing on the total number of times our units are moving in and out of the firehouse to respond to emergencies and incidents. As a result of that, there were 210 instances last year where we had inadequate or unavailable resources to respond to an emergency incident that was being requested of us. And so we'll talk a little bit about how we plan for our resource deployment and a little bit about why we end up with multi-units here in just a minute, but just to put some perspective on, it's not just about the number of calls for service that we have, because not every call can be handled by a two-person medic response vehicle or a two-person engine company. And for those who have spent time with us or been at one of our fire ops events, you certainly can appreciate that not everything can be done by one or two people, and so that, that resource need becomes a very important part of how we address the demand that we're
Continuing some of our, our response challenges, 58% of our total call volume is from overlapping calls. So in other words, multiple calls happening during the same period of time. I've worked through the, how to design this table a few different times with the city manager, just so it can make sense. So if there is any confusion, I will kind of walk through it so that everyone understands. But if we go to, to the second row, where we start with one emergency responded to, and then 2873 calls and 41.6%, essentially, what, what that means is when we have an incident and we're toned to it, we respond, we mitigate the incident, and we clear without any other interruption or any other call. So 2,873 times that occurred in 2023. You go to the row below it with at least two calls in progress at the same time, 1,506, 1,556 occurrences, which resulted in 3,112, the majority of our calls, of any, any group of calls. We have an incident where we respond with one to three units to a certain emergency, and before they clear that incident, another emergency occurs. Okay? And then so on and so forth, as far as at least three calls in progress at the same time, happens even more than 11% of the time. So in all, nearly 60% of our total call volume are, are doubles, triples, quadruples, and even quintuples occurring at the same time, which, you know, as the, the assistant chief mentioned, even just one call could use all three of our units. And so we run into situations where if we are at that two call or even three calls happening at the same time, we are out of resources. We have nobody else to respond to any emergency in the city, and we're delayed potentially to any other further emergency that happens after that. We can, it can happen really quick, but we, we become very lean very quickly. Also to go with that, so the total amount of these occurrences of getting a double, a triple, a quadruple, or a quintuple is over six times a day. We, we average that, and I kept track of it today before I got here, and we're at five times so far that it's happened today, that we've gotten at least a double or more at the same time. So it's very frequent, and it happens very often, and it is a pretty, pretty significant strain on our availability for response.
One of the areas that we use to benchmark is the NFPA standard, and it's a standard number 1710. And so this is an industry standard. NFPA does sort of the world of fire codes. They also do the world of industry standards. of, uh, fire codes. They also do the world of, uh, industry standards. It's recognized as the industry standard. Uh, they help us with our turnout gear, they help us with the equipment that we make, uh, the fire trucks that we drive. All the things that we use in the fire service are driven by the standards by which NFPA sets, uh, sets forth. And so seventeen-ten is the standard that governs staffing for, uh, career fire departments, and it also helps to give us some benchmarks for time. And so one of those benchmarks that we use sort of internally as a, uh, as a keep an eye on is, uh, the, the dispatch to arrival time, which, uh, for the NFPA standard is five minutes and twenty seconds ninety percent of the time. So ninety percent of your calls are responded to and arrived on in five minutes or twenty seconds. And so when we look at where we are at with that, uh, percentage and with that time threshold, and we use this holistically, so this is all of our calls, whether we respond, um, without lights and sirens, with lights and sirens, uh, we just look at this as a big data figure. Uh, our ninetieth percentile response is eight minutes and thirty-one seconds. So for us, ninety percent of our calls are handled in eight, or are arrived to in eight minutes or thirty-one seconds or less, which is a little off of where we would like to be and where that, that standard kind of guides us. Uh, but it helps us to have a benchmark and an, an industry standard that we can look at and say, what are we trying to achieve? Um, and what are some of the factors that are then causing us to not achieve that standard? And as the chief mentioned, one of those factors is, um, we have units that go out on calls, and once they're engaged in that, you can't just drop everything you're doing to get to that next call. And so that starts to creep in with that delay, uh, when you start to see two, three, four, or even five calls that are happening all at one time.
And can I just ask, do you have a sense of the trend with our ninetieth percentile response time over time?
It's not, uh, unfortunately, the ability for us to track that is relatively new. Um, uh, I can say anecdotally, uh, it has increased over time. There was a period of time several years ago where we could track this fairly easily, and we've had a gap in our data management system. Um, so it's a rel- relatively, to, to be able to say with confidence what our information is, it's a relatively small window of time in which I have it. Um, but I can say anecdotally that it has had an increase, as you have seen our calls increase, or our number of what I call colliding calls, where they're happening at multiple times. You've seen that increase kind of stay with it anecdotally.
Well, the reason I asked was because I seem to recall in past, you know, information from the department, that there wasn't a, a note that, that we were outside or that far outside of the NFPA standard. And so that's why I was, uh, but you're, uh, if it's been a while since we've had good data, there's that gap. It's hard to...
We have used average response times in the past, and those are a little complicated. Uh, the NFPA standards doesn't use an average, and the reason for that is when we talk about averages, it sort of gives you a false sense of reality, meaning if I say our average response time is three minutes, um, you get that situation where we're not truly responding to the majority of our calls in three minutes, but we might average that, and then you sort of have this, the, the, the reciprocal feeling of a, of a caller of nine-one-one is, well, they'll always be here in three minutes, except when they're not. And then you start to build up this sort of imaginary ability that we don't really have. And that's been a, a historical number that we had used in the past. Um, and sort of as we reconciled with the new data system and with NFPA standard, it, it's more effective to not look at the average all the time, although it can be helpful. Uh, looking at a, a percentage or the ninetieth percentage, uh, is a little bit more helpful in providing a realistic context. So hopefully that helps give a little bit of perspective to it as well.
Well, that's a good point, because average is definitely something like half is above and something like half is below.
Yep.
So I can see where that can be, that can be, as you said, more deceptive. It would be interesting if it's available and not too much of a challenge to, to, to maybe pick a couple of times in the past and see when we set our average was three point whatever, what was our ninetieth percentile that year, just strictly to have a sense, since we don't have a constant trend.
And that's, that should be something we can do. It won't happen nearly as easily as it does now. Um, but as we look through what happens after tonight, that can certainly be something that we include to give more broad perspective at that particular percentage rate, too.
Has, has the NFPA standard changed?
N- not recently, no. It's been consistent for seventeen-ten, so seventeen-ten has covered career or combination fire departments for a long time, and those benchmarks have been the same for pretty much as long as I've been in the fire service, um, which has been as long as seventeen-ten has been around. So, uh, to try to put this into context, uh, and maybe give us a little bit more of a tangible feeling, I, I'm not trying to bring, uh, emotions overly into it, but just to try to give some perspective for how this has an impact on the streets. Um, December seventeenth of last year, we had a situation where we had multiple calls happen all unto themselves. And, uh, this is kind of a fun story for me to tell, because it has such a great outcome in both instances, but, uh, we had a crew who cleared a call down at the area of Larpenter and Lexington on their way back to the fire station. Uh, they got to about Roseland, and a call for cardiac arrest came out, and they were literally in the driveway of the call. Uh, and so they turned into the call, went inside, started CPR immediately. The rest of the crew was in the firehouse. They started from the firehouse, immediately got there, uh, and we brought what is now our functioning ALS first response model to the family on December seventeenth. They were able to get a pulse back for that patient, um, and the patient was subsequently transported to the hospital and five days walked out of the hospital to celebrate Christmas holidays and the New Year with their family that evening. Um, and at the same time, and the reason I bring this up was, at the same time that the crew was what we call all hands working in the middle of that cardiac arrest, we had a call come out at the original Pancake House for smoke in a commercial dwelling or commercial building. Uh, and so we didn't have anyone to respond to that. And so this is one of those examples where the system will start by saying, there's nobody there, and then we rely on our neighbors, and fortunately, um, me being at home and having the availability to come back from home. Um, but that call had one of those areas where you'll see a delayed response. We had a, an engine company from Lake Johannacombe, so from roughly Victorian six ninety-four all the way over to the Roseville Mall area, um, and then myself coming from home to make it to that call. The good news was, um, positive outcomes for both incidents, so we don't have this big dramatic, uh, terrible thing. Actually, we have a very positive thing that happened, and it's, it's fun to talk about that and to recognize that. Uh, but it does show that those calls that happen simultaneously and those multi-unit response calls, um, aren't always benign in nature, right? You can have very critical calls that are happening on top of themselves. And, uh, the March eleventh, uh, highlight and case study that we'll talk about right now was one of those examples. Um, literally simultaneously as our crews were dispatched to a working house fire on County Road C over by Western, uh, we were dispatched to a cardiac arrest incident up on West Owasso. And so, uh, the crews that were on duty that day made the decision that, uh, a portion of the on-duty staffing crew was going to head to the structure fire, and a portion of the crew was going to head to the cardiac arrest. And so, when we think about that, we still think, um, at a, or we look at a, a structure fire as a call that has people trapped until we can determine that they are not. And so when we think about this, and this is the example that I use, uh, most, most readily is, you have a person in cardiac arrest and, and potentially somebody trapped inside of a burning building. Uh, both people are literally holding their breath, and how long can they continue to do that before help arrives? And so in that instance, um, we also had a fire inspector who was out doing a fire inspection, so we had this perfect storm of two very critical incidents, an additional staff member who was tied up across town, uh, and a split of our resources. And so, um, we can't say that the outcome would have been impacted by any sort of change, other than to say that for our response on both of those incidents, we didn't have the number of staff that we would have wanted for either one of those calls. Whether it was for the cardiac arrest, wanting six to seven of our firefighters to start all of the interventions that we do, uh, or for the structure fire, um, that didn't have a positive outcome for the resident, uh, having the additional hands there to begin all of the steps that we take, uh, when we get to the fire ground. And so it's more of, again, that example that, um, sometimes those incidents are critical. Uh, sometimes they're happening on top of each other, and sometimes, um, we're having to split those resources when we really wouldn't want to do that, uh, for a lot of safety reasons, just for our firefighters, but also for, uh, the people who are on, on the receiving side of our services as well. And then lastly, uh, later on that week, and the chief is going to touch a little bit about this and how we talk about how this is impacting all of our neighbors, um, but we had an automatic aid response to one of our neighboring departments. Uh, and they're, uh, a combination department, so they have a duty crew staffing model, and then they have a paid-on-call, call from, bring-from-home model. Uh, so we got to the fire with their crews, um, started the work and the extinguishment and helped with incident command. Uh, and in that particular incident that evening, uh, they only had one of their members come back from home to help cover the incident for them. And so when we talk about the challenges that we're having from a call volume impact standpoint, um, our neighbors are seeing those impacts too, and in some cases, they're seeing them from the perspective of members being able to come back to help out, and then just simply that, uh, that call volume increase that they're experiencing as well.
For mine, it's kind of more of an externity. Uh, the Assistant Chief, uh, you know, evaluated kind of the internal issues that we've had with different case studies. For mine, um, you know, Eagan Fire Department is a, is a prime example, um, of an organization that was a slight duty crew, but predominantly all paid-on-call, uh, back about two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and then something really bad happened. Um, a homeowner's house burned to the ground with a delayed response from their staff. Um, and uniquely, the homeowner and the fire chief, uh, actually got together, and the homeowner said, well, we can't have this happen again. Um, and so the homeowner became the biggest advocate for the fire department to, uh, provide, or help get the staffing that the fire department needed, and now they have over forty firefighters. Um, again, a reactive response, um, to, uh, in the city of Eagan. Uh, Shakopee, another example, um, you know, is maybe a story, we saw a story in the Star Tribune, uh, they have internal issues with a lot of leadership, um, and some, uh, cultural issues, some mismanagement going on. Um, through their study that happened in, in Shakopee, um, they found that it would be best if they redo their administration and then hire thirty full-time firefighters. Um, and so again, a reactive response to a, a bad situation. And kind of to, to Neil's point of, I think you wrote it down, a dramatic and terrible thing. Um, before a dramatic and terrible thing happens in Roseville, I want us to be in a proactive position where we can be making smart decisions about future planning for staffing, so that we don't have a, holy crap, something really bad happened in Roseville, now we have to do something about it. Um, the city of Maplewood is, is doing a lot of strategic planning. They are adding, uh, between six and nine additional firefighters over the next three years. Uh, as, as Neil mentioned in his piece on the, uh, unit staffing, uh, they're adding a fifth piece of apparatus to handle the, the call volume demand that's happening in their community. Uh, an item, um, related to staffing that, um, you know, we wanted to talk about firefighter retention and turnover, as well as, uh, firefighter injuries. Um, we've had some increased turnover in the last few years. Um, some is related to the, to the job market, um, some related to promotions into other organizations. You know, three of our last four people that have left the fire department have moved on to different promotions, which is exciting, and that's awesome. Um, but that also leaves a, a huge gap for us and for our staffing. And so that's important for us to, to address and to, to take care of. As well as firefighter injuries, um, have been a little bit of an uptick over the last couple of years. Um, thankfully, uh, the vast majority of the injuries are, are pretty low acuity, um, some, some stiffness and, and, you know, musculoskeletal type injuries, but we have had a couple of pretty significant injuries over the last couple of years that have caused some pretty significant outages, uh, for our staffing. And so it's just something that we have to continuously address, um, with the turnover piece and with firefighter injuries on, on how we best maintain them moving forward. Um, and additional staffing, uh, in the future can help with, uh, alleviate some of these issues. Going into kind of the overtime piece, um, so this is a representation of our total overtime actuals from, uh, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three. Uh, I used approximate hours. Uh, I was not able, not able to get the actual hours worked specifically to go back that far in time with our, our payroll clerk. However, um, worked with them on trying to evaluate, um, the, uh, looking at the contracts over those multiple years, um, the approximate amount. So we have exact dollars there, but we have approximate hours worked. And as you can see, there is an increase both in, in hours worked as well as, uh, in total dollars. Um, so there's pretty my, three primary reasons for this growth. Um, you know, one is the turnover piece. Um, when we have a firefighter that gives us a, a two-week notice, um, it's between ten and twelve weeks before we can actually fill that spot. Um, four to six weeks, easy, just to get them in the door, and then anywhere from three to six weeks of an onboarding academy-type, uh, piece. Now, we're hoping, uh, in future years, that our fire cadet program can help reduce that pretty significantly, a lot less onboarding, um, that we have to do. Um, injuries, uh, as I mentioned, we have had some long-term, some, in some short-term injuries, um, but either way, when it does occur, even if it's for one shift or for a hundred shifts, uh, it creates a gap. It creates a vacancy that, that we need to fill. When you run twenty-four, seven, you have to meet at least a six-person staffing model. Um, it can create gaps. Uh, and the third main one is, uh, the parental leave benefit. While a wonderful benefit and very supportive of it, um, it's also caused shift vacancies, uh, to be filled, and we have to constantly do that. And one of our biggest things, which my Assistant Chief, as the coordinator of the operations, takes care of, is when multiple things are happening at the same time, like a parental leave and an injury, but it's something that we just work through, um, and we do the best we can, whether that sometimes means moving a firefighter, uh, to a different shift for a short period of time, um, you know, something like that, as well as filling with, with overtime.
So we talked a little bit about how do we get to our staffing numbers, and there are a couple of studies. Uh, I know that I have shared these with council in the past over the course of my career, uh, and we talk a lot about them when we're together doing fire ground, uh, techniques. But, uh, NIST, which is the National Institute of Standards and Technology, has done a couple of really deep studies on, uh, what is the benefit of the number of firefighters that are in, uh, and we use an engine company for this conversation, but so the fire engine company that's going to come and put out the fire, if you will, at my house. And so when we look at a three-person engine company versus a four-person engine company, that's the context that we're going to use, um, a four-person engine company is able to perform the fire ground tasks. So whether that's, um, fire attack with the fire hose, ground ladder deployment, or victim search and rescue, uh, they're able to perform all of those tasks thirty percent quicker than a three-person crew, right? So we start to see some pretty significant increase in, um, ability and, and capability of the crews. And as we look at what does the fire ground done in the last twenty to thirty to forty years, uh, the amount of time that we have, and I think this has been pretty well advertised by the fire service as a whole, but, um, fires today burn faster and quicker than they ever have. Uh, there's a great video that just popped up on social media that shows a house from the seventies with traditional furniture in it, uh, and a modern-day house, and they're at the four-and-a-half-minute mark. And the house with the traditional furniture has a fire in the small corner, looks like it might still be in a trash can, and the house, uh, that's on the right-hand side that is modern construction with modern materials, is black floor to ceiling with flames pulling out of the front of it. And so when we talk about why does time matter, that's a big part of why time matters, because we've got less time to do anything, uh, and to mitigate the issues that are in front of us. And so when we look at how did we get to the number of minimum people on duty, and how do we get to, why do we need multiple units to respond, uh, these types of studies are what help us do that. When we look at EMS response, uh, a four-person EMS crew, so a four-person crew responding to your cardiac arrest versus a two-person crew, is able to do and complete their tasks in two minutes and forty seconds less time than a two-person crew. So my comment again about holding your breath, I can't hold my breath for two minutes, but that's okay. Um, it matters because it makes a difference in that context, and they're able to get through those advanced, uh, skills that they need to. Uh, and then lastly, one of the things that we included for council tonight was, um, a study that had taken the time, uh, and the initiative to try to put a value on an additional firefighter or an additional staffing, uh, position. Uh, and this is a pretty hard thing to quantify, but it's a peer-reviewed article that was done, uh, from, for the Homeland Security Department. Um, in a nutshell, the added value in the prevention of loss damage by fire per firefighter added is roughly six hundred thousand dollars saved in a community our size and, uh, with similar deployment. So, uh, just sort of a, a high-level view of that data and, and that, those components, and we did include some links to those studies. If you're bored and would like something to read in the evening to help you, uh, get prepared for bed, um, you can jump in and take a look at them. They're very good studies. The NIST studies are very long. The Homeland Security Study that was done, uh, has a great synopsis article that goes along with it to try to articulate how they got to where they did and, and how they support that dollar value of savings, uh, overall.
Other items that we've talked about, and then council's quite aware of them, is, you know, the improved firefighter safety, the balance of the workload, uh, just better dispersment of, of the call volume that's coming through. Um, and Chief Scholstrom made reference of it with kind of our cardiac arrest situation. It's just more upfront, firefighters on scene is, is huge for our citizens and for the patient response that we have, uh, whether it's a fire, a car accident, cardiac arrest, or any emergency. Uh, being able to upfront our, our emergency with more personnel is, is going to be in a better situation for all people. Uh, better able to meet the, uh, emergency demands of the community. Um, the call volume growth is, is not going anywhere. Um, as you can see, it's, we might have a stagnant year here or there, but it's not going anywhere. We are going to continue to grow at five to ten percent annually from here on out. Um, and we just want to be better prepared for that. Uh, consistent service level, uh, you know, Chief Scholstrom just got done talking about kind of our, our response delays and different things that we have. We're not always providing a consistent level of service for our fire and EMS response in the city. And our current call volume demand and our, uh, staffing model that is trying to meet that demand is what's falling a little bit short of being able to be consistent day in and day out. NFPA and OSHA compliance, Neil talked about, uh, the NFPA seventeen-ten, as well as OSHA compliance, compliance. We want to make sure that we're, um, falling in line as best we can with all those requirements and recommendations. And also, just to continue the, uh, the phase-two goals, um, multiple of you were, were part of that phase-two process where we talked about advanced life support first response, which we've done, um, and is running successfully. We have some wonderful stories on, on the successes of that program. But also with that was mobile integrated healthcare. How can we do better at health outreach, especially hitting some of our high utilizers of the nine-one-one system? And number three, improved and enhanced fire inspection, uh, and prevention programs. We've done some of that. So we've maybe done one and a half of our three goals. There's still more to do, and I think with additional staffing to help balance some of these things out, I think we can see these goals, uh, come to fruition. So breaking down kind of the, the costs, uh, so the numbers displayed are utilizing the, the new contract for the next two years for the firefighters. Essentially, it's, you know, five steps over a three-year period of time. Um, so our benefits and, and the pair is rounded, is a rounded number, uh, given to me to, by the finance director that said that this would be the kind of the best number to work off of, um, as a customary estimation. Uh, then the total amount for a firefighter is in our, our fourth column. I do want to note, uh, while salary and benefit package of a hundred and forty thousand dollars may be eye-opening to some, uh, I think it's important to break this down into the impact on the levy, and that's why I put that in that last column. Uh, working with Finance Director Petrick, utilizing twenty twenty-four budget dollars, the tax levy in the median valued home in Roseville, um, as of course, we don't know the twenty-twenty-five numbers yet, a full-time firefighter would have cost the median valued home in Roseville approximately seven dollars annually, or the equivalent of fifty-eight cents a month, about point four percent of, on the levy. I completely understand that increases can be a detriment or burden to, to anyone and everyone. I am also a citizen and a taxpayer in the city of Roseville, just like all of you. Uh, but if we stop for a moment and consider fifty-eight cents a month, I think that put things, puts things into clear perspective But if we stop for a moment and consider 58 cents a month, I think that put things, puts things into clear perspective on the return of investment that we have for our community. A small increase or impact on the taxpayer for better, more responsive and available firefighters. So as we wrap things up, as mentioned in the previous slide, firefighters are an investment. But, but life and property protection is an essential service and should have an investment tied to it. We are a levy-based service. That's the fire service. There's a reason I use this picture for this slide because it's exactly what Governor Walz said just over a year ago when he came to the city of Roseville and the Roseville Fire Department to discuss his commitment to public safety, safety through budgeting. To quote, "There is a cost to readiness and response." And while there are fun niceties that we like to do or offer as a service in the city, first and foremost should be the equitable protective services of our community.
As we mentioned previously, and just sort of to reiterate that, our partner agencies are experiencing the same thing, whether it was the incident where only one firefighter came for a callback or taking a look at what's happening with Maplewood and how they're sort of strategically addressing the challenges that they're facing. This isn't only a challenge that we're seeing and so we want to be ahead of the game, meaning we've seen what can happen if we aren't proactive and we don't want to get into that position either. So that's, that's what's pushing us to this point tonight.
And council, you're, you're very aware of a lot of the dynamics of Roseville, whether it's high hazard sites. We have the whole west side of our city has about 400 different semis of fuel that comes in and out of our city. We have compressed gas. We have a second major retail site in the community or in the, in the state as well as a lot of highways. Our increased daytime population that typically doubles and now maybe even more. Growing multifamily is, is a big piece. That's a big factor that's impacted public safety, police and fire. The 25% increase of multifamily or apartment units in the last five years is significant. And we have nothing against, you know, deciding to do and perform development in the city, but we should have commensurate services to, to meet that. Our older population in Roseville, we per capita have a higher or older population in Roseville. Those folks, those baby boomers are going to be leaning on emergency medical services for the next 15 to 30 years. I hope closer to 30 years. But that's just the case and they are going to be relying on it. And there's buildings right across our street that are perfect examples of people that are relying on our services day in and day out to provide that high level. And in addition to that, I think that we are in a unique spot with EMS response and transport in the state of Minnesota. There are starting to be changes. Didn't quite get that far this last session that just finished. But there is a big push for more evaluation of primary service areas and local control of EMS response and transport. In addition to that, we have had conversations with our current PSA provider about providing a supplemental service to them. So rather than calling a mutual aid, you know, ambulance that's coming from 15 to 20 minutes away, maybe Roseville Fire is that, that provider of that service to, to assist. But those things are, are all at play. The, the point is we'd like to be strategically, strategically placed with our staffing better if something like that were to, to come online. So with that, we can answer any, any questions the council might have.
I did want to just talk a little bit about the increasing call volume because in my mind I was thinking, well, at some point it has to plateau. It can't just keep going up and up and up. But then I thought about the demographics that we all hear about and, and actually regardless of whether we have more senior housing in Roseville, we have more people in that demographic universally and that's not changing. And so I'm imagining that that's a significant contributor to the, to the call volume change is just because our population as a whole is, is aging. So I, to try to help balance that with the notion that we have had the additional multifamily. You know, people of all ages move into multifamily and they represent the same population that's in all of our, you know, single-family homes and elsewhere in the city of Roseville. And the population in general is, is aging. The average age is going up. The percentage of the population represented by people over 65 is going up. And so I think that's, that's what seems to be, when you think about demographics, contributing a lot to this. And just wanted to get a sense from you if that's, that's sort of what you're, what you're saying in, in your message as well.
Yes.
Other questions from the council for staff on this? And once again, the, probably the primary ask is, is sort of what do, what do we want to do going forward? So, you know, if we've got a lot of questions, we don't have all the information. I think it's okay this evening to not have all the information that council member had.
A, a few questions. Good. First, you mentioned Alina there. Where do they fit into your sense of response in the numbers? For example, if people being in a cardiac, so you say, hey, we could have six people there. That is our best responsibility to, to take care of that person and, and address potential damage to, right? Where does, where do they fall into that equation? And I understand that they aren't falling in that equation enough, but at some point they have to add some.
Falling in the equation in the context of time or intervention?
Time and human beings trained to medical response.
Yeah, it's twofold. There, there is a time piece of it and I don't want to say an average response time for them because I'm not prepared to give that type of a number. But I can say that, I would say that their average would be anywhere between 10 and 14 minutes arriving. And so when we take out our response time, they're going to be anywhere from five to 10 minutes behind us. When they get there, if you want to look at sort of a real tangible incident, how does the thing, how do things play out? We bring our ALS first response level of care to the scene, which is quite a versatile toolkit. There are still a couple of things that Alina, as the paramedic level transport agency, has in their toolkit that we do not have. So they would bring those extra couple of, of tools to the incident. And then their primary role is to assist with getting the patient from the home to the hospital. And so in a cardiac arrest event, in, in the, in the real world, the critical interventions we hope are done by our crew when they get there right away because time truly is of the essence and any sorts of delay is going to be, you know, a negative impact on the patient. And so when they get there, sort of our goal is that we've accomplished those critical interventions that can be done, whether that's medication, establishing a critical or an advanced airway and then making sure that uninterrupted CPR is happening. Those are all the things that we're doing. They do provide not just the transport, but once their two individuals get there, whether it's a paramedic and an EMT or two paramedics, that is an extra set of hands. So that can free up one of our crews. But again, as I used in that example with the, the patient who was able to return home about five days later, it took all six of our personnel plus those two people from Alina to get the patient from inside the house into the ambulance and, and then on their way to the hospital. And that's a reality. It takes a lot to move people that aren't able to help us move them either. And so that, that is a, just in general, pretty common scenario too, when it comes to moving somebody who's incapacitated.
Thank you. My other question is, you frequently have talked here about an additional apparatus. What type of apparatus would you propose would be most useful to add? So you have more humans. What's the fourth apparatus?
Yep. It would likely be a cross-staffing situation where we would have an, a medic response vehicle and then it would be cross-staffed with a fire apparatus like our ladder truck to provide that fire support as well as the EMS support.
Can you say more about that cross-staffing piece? Does that say depending on the call, they're going to get in a different vehicle? Is that?
Depending on the call type and this also reduces then the utilization of our, as our, of our fire engine on EMS calls. Keeping our fire engine even more available for fire-specific type calls. Right now, our, our fire engine runs on a lot of EMS calls. And I think between the hour utilization and just its, its functionality, it makes more sense to keep it as available as possible just for fire-type response.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, Councilmember Strong?
Yes. You know, you're talking about the call volume going up. Could you give us an idea of the breakdown of, say, are, are the majority of these increases, is that from like the cardiac kind of situation? Or is it fire? Or what type of calls are, are, are causing this increase?
There isn't any, I wouldn't say there is any specific call type. We can get, gather that info and, and get that to the, to the council tomorrow if there is something. But it's, it's a smattering of, of all call types. So as, as a volume, it, it's raising, but there is not a specific, like, there's more falls than ever before. You know, we're, you know, seeing a high increase in, in this one type of call over, than, over another. So, but we can, we can try to provide that to you, but I think we're seeing it across the board of every call type is just kind of having this increase.
Sure. Cause yeah, I was trying to understand what kind of resources we need because depending on what type of calls we're getting. So that, that would make sense. And then curious on why are we having more injuries? Is it because we have more staff? Or is it because of, what, what, what's causing us to have more increase in that area?
It's a good question. Is it related to more staff? Is it related to high call volume? I mean, we're going on more calls. Is that, does that relate to more injuries? I don't know for sure. So I don't have a specific answer to that. All the injuries though were actual on-duty injuries. They weren't, you know, something that, you know, somebody was out skiing for the weekend and injured themselves or anything like that. It's actual on-duty injuries. There's a few that are related to, to training. You know, they might, you know, twist their knee or do something while they're, while they're training, but the majority are all call response related.
Thank you.
Other questions, Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. So I'm just curious about why we have such low expectations of our ambulance response folks. And I realize it's because we have come to have low outcomes. But I would assume if we were in another city that maybe was staffed by volunteer or folks who are being called in, that they would have to rely more heavily on these Alina or whoever else their provider is. So is there any, can you speak to why we have such low expectations of them? And if there's any chance that we could ever have higher expectations of them? Just feels like we are taking so much of what we would normally expect them to be doing.
For me, I, I wouldn't necessarily say it's low expectations. I think that they are experiencing the exact same thing that we are. That, that the call volumes are, are growing and staff models are having, you know, having struggles keeping up with it. You know, when we've met with council over the years, whether it's as we've, you know, advanced in EMS, especially as we transition to ALS first response. You know, the city council gets to make the decision on the level of care in the city or that's provided by, by the fire department. And so we've kind of had the mindset that, you know, going off of what Chief Shosstrom said when he answered, Councilmember Etten is, you know, we want to provide that highest level of EMS care. That's, we always have felt that's our job where their job is the transport. And we can work collaboratively, collaboratively together and I think we do. But it's always been our goal to provide that highest level of care. Now, as far as Alina's abilities, I think that they're struggling just like some other agencies are to, to meet the demand. If you go to any community in Hennepin County right now that is served by Hennepin County EMS, they are also struggling with response times. Maybe even worse than, than Alina. And so, and so we're, this isn't, this isn't new. This isn't unique just to us. A lot of people are struggling with this. No, I don't necessarily, there's nothing really right now that's telling me that yes, it's going to turn around. As I said, I think call volumes are going to continue to grow for all of our communities. So unless the, they can have a huge onboarding of new paramedics and new staff, I, I don't think it's going to be a significant change in the future.
So you mentioned, I know over the times in the last couple of years when we've met this concern about growth having a lot to do with the multifamily housing. And it sounds like you're indicating that that's playing out as there's more folks, a variety of reasons. Many of the housing units are geared towards seniors and maybe toward folks who are underinsured medically and a variety of reasons. So I'm just curious, as we enter into a housing study and explore what our housing needs are as a community moving forward, concerned about having that be a conflict that we would bring in more housing and impact further. So do you have like a sense of, like, for each person that we bring in, I know that you have some kind of metrics like that. I feel like we have to make sure we consider that as we look at possibly intentionally developing more housing within our city.
Yeah. I mean, as we mentioned, we're, we're not against development and, and for, for the city of Roseville. We just feel that there should be commensurate services to meet that development or that density. We do have a, a number. It's, it's maybe a couple of years old. So we might have to refresh that. But it was always about 1.1 calls per unit for nursing homes. So 1.1 calls per year, per unit. So if you have, you know, 100 unit nursing home, 110 times a year, the fire department will go there. For assisted living is right around 0.8 and for just normal multifamily, it was typically around 0.4, you know, calls per year, per unit. And so that's kind of just a metric that we've had in the past when we've kind of talked about different types of development. A perfect example is the sites on Herschel behind Byerly's. Between those three buildings, in one year, we went there about 245 times to those three buildings. The ones across the street, we've been to one of them, we went 110 times and the other one, we went 40 times. So 150 calls between those two buildings annually.
And if I could just add, and that number is even starker when you consider with the amount of calls we had there before, both police and fire, which were pretty vacant. Zero, basically zero. So it's a big jump when you have that. If it's more incremental development, maybe able to work your way into it. But if you don't have commensurate resources to back that up, you're going to, will be hard.
I think one important thing is in the reading and materials that were provided, was not something that's been mentioned, is the interruptions to the inspections. So you had mentioned the inspections being, when there are all these calls, that there's the planned systematic Monday through Friday inspections of facilities. And so I'm wondering if this is the time when we talk about whether inspections should remain in the fire department. I know that that had moved not too long ago, possibly at the start of when this process began or this stage. But, and I know at some point there's been talk of maybe having a, a, some type of safety person who is removed completely from that service and, and that is their sole duty. You didn't speak to that. Can you speak a little bit more about what that thought is at this moment?
Yeah. So about six years ago, we made the transition to put a fire inspector on duty. So there were three fire inspectors on each of the, the three shifts that we had. Made sense at the time. Great idea. But we were, what we found with this increasing call volume and taking on more responsibilities, we took on multifamily housing. We're increasing with hotel motel and currently, and then moving into the future with our hotel licensing. We were finding ourselves very stretched. It was becoming very, very difficult to complete a multifamily inspection. You talk about, you know, Rosedale Estates, you know, on the, the east side of town, very large building. And taking an entire unit out of service, you know, potentially if we only have six on duty, to do a three to five hour long inspection truly impacts the, the crews that are still on duty. And like our case study with the example that we were on the other side of the city doing a fire inspection and we catch a fire. We had to stop that inspection, cancel it, you know, and, and set up or reschedule that inspection. So the consistency of being able to provide a high level of fire inspection has been, been poor. And it's no fault of the fire inspectors themselves. It's just our, our call volume and growth and being able to keep up with, with that on the fire inspection side of things has been very, very difficult. So yes, over the last few years, I've been in conversations with the city manager on trying to work in potentially a Monday through Friday fire inspector that would take care of our plan review, take care of complaints, take care of our reactive inspections, so all of our permits, our multifamily licensing, our hotel motel and those, and those types of things. And I think that'd be like to, that's something I'd like to again propose in this next budget cycle as well.
And I just wanted to add, you mentioned parental leave, which I would assume is a combination of parental leave. Is that a benefit of, they have paid parental leave as one of their benefits?
Yep. It's a six-week, yeah.
Not the state of Minnesota parental leave. Okay. But that is impacting and I would hope that given the age, the young age of many of the firefighters, that that is considered the paid family leave that will be coming in 2026 to make sure that if some prognosticator can figure out how that would economically factor in because there's going to be a, you know, employer contribution as well. I did look at, I'm not sure what the whole numbers include, but you know, that 31, 35 normally out of 20, 80 hours per year would be like 65,000 plus 35,000 and benefits would be about 100,000. It was shown like 128 to 130 or somewhere in there, but I would assume that maybe is figuring in kind of an average overtime.
So for firefighters, you're maybe taking it off a 40-hour work week. They, okay, they work a 53-hour work week.
Okay.
Yep. Which also includes FLSA. So, so it's these numbers essentially times 53.
So it's 53 and automatic, they're automatically in overtime then? No, it can go up to FLSA, go up to 53.
The special K exemption goes up to 53 hours. The firefighter's work schedule is one-third of the year. So 2,912 hours a year is what they work. So that's, the three shifts breaks down into each shift is here for one-third of the year, which is almost 3,000 hours for them.
Perfect. Thanks. I was unaware of that. Appreciate that clarification.
Another question.
The comment, probably it's good that we had most of our housing built before in an earlier period where they don't burn quite as quickly as.
Classics.
And the only other thing I struggled with was, you know, why our, why our call volume went up so much and why it would be continuous into the future as far as we can see. The numbers are what they are, so we have to prepare for it.
I did have a, a couple of questions. One is as we, as we've observed some of these trends, especially related to maybe multiple calls with not having enough on, on-duty staffing. Does it seem to hit one shift more than others or one time of day more than others? Or is that too optimistic?
Which shift are you asking?
I'm not specifying which one. I'm just, I was thinking about it in terms of if we're looking to transition from where we are now to something in the future that's fully staffed, do we do it sort of on a shift? Do we do it sort of on a shift basis? In, you know, thinking about how we did our three-year transition, um, with the last SAFER grant, in other words.
Yeah, there's not a difference between the shifts, so to speak. There is a difference between time of day, and so that does lend itself to, uh, certainly options for implementation, right? If this is the end and this is where we start, uh, there are some things that we could do in the intermediary to get to the end that might bring some relief and some help. But there isn't any one shift that is impacted more than the other. But like I said, there is time of day, so to speak.
Sure.
Yeah, our call volume is direct in line with what you would assume as our daytime staffing in the city of Roseville. Nine AM to nine PM, it is off the charts. And it does quiet down at night, but we still get calls pretty consistently overnight as well. But the, the primary amount is obviously during the 12 hours in the main daytime.
All right, and then talking about sort of, you know, with, we've been using the cardiac arrest example, and, and I think you said six to seven people, I think, is kind of what you like to have there. And, and part of that is the, the role to help transition the person out to the, to the ambulance. Is that a place where sometimes we have, like, if we can, if we can have a, a robust cadet program where people aren't, you know, all at the ALS EMS level, but they have their role on the site and it's a way to, A, to get people into sort of the, the, the train for staffing as, as, as firefighter EMS for the city of Roseville, but then also filling in some of those roles on the scene where we don't necessarily, you know, if we're not able to completely staff up, you know, there's ways to, I'm just trying to think of, if, if you're thinking about ways to fill some of those gaps, and if that's one of them.
Yeah, we do, uh, the cadets that are in our program right now, a part of their sort of onboarding slash training as they're learning is to do ride-alongs and work with the crews. And so we, uh, depending on where their training is at and what their background or experience is, uh, we do push them to lean in and to get involved, uh, and to be a part of those incidents and those, uh, those calls, both for their benefit to the experience, but also to the benefit of the patient. And, um, you know, I do want to be clear that, that even when we don't have the right number of our firefighters on a cardiac arrest, uh, you know, we lean into the fact that we work as a team and that we do have partners that work with us too. And so whether that's, uh, our police department or with Alina, um, you know, we can, we can get to the end goal. It's just that the, the time that it takes or maybe the, uh, the level of orchestration that's required isn't exactly what we want. But we certainly do lean into when we need to improvise, we, we do. And that's an important part, uh, to acknowledge because our firefighters do a really good job at that when they have to. And, and I think that's important to recognize for the work that they do as well.
Sure, sure, thank you. Uh, and I just wanted, you've, good that you've got this slide up. I was just going to clarify too, it, it kind of went over quickly, but it's those figures, the $7 annually and the 50 cents per month are per firefighter. So for staffing up to a certain level, that's going to be not just one firefighter. That's going to be a, a, a coterie of firefighters to, to fill those roles because you have the different shifts and nobody can work 24/7, so.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that. Other questions from the council? I think the only other thing I was wondering about is do we have enough information to be able to sort of come to some conclusion, conclusions on our own without having a staffing study? Or, I mean, how do we feel where we're at with that? Or what are we looking at to get from that expertise maybe that we'd be bringing in?
Um, I, I guess having a, for me, um, having a third party be able to provide that feedback is, you know, I could for, for years come to the council and say, I need more firefighters, I need more firefighters, I need more firefighters. And so I, I think it gets to at least a point to have somebody else come in and say, hey, city of Roseville, here's where you're currently at and here's where you probably could or should be over the next amount of, you know, X amount of years. No, I don't know if it's required. I think it was just more of a, I think it's maybe just a, a proper or standardized way to provide that, uh, view for the city to, to be able to take a look at. But I'm not married to that idea.
I didn't, I didn't want to put too much more work in, in your hands either, although I know you've been looking at this in, in great detail up to this point already, so, all right. Uh, other questions or thoughts from council members? I mean, it, it seems like something we've got to take a look at in some fashion, for sure.
Well, I actually agree with you, Mayor. I, I did have the same thing go through my head is how much is a study like that going to cost? And is it really going to give us information or should we move forward? And at least for myself, this convinces me that we need to be hiring more firefighters. Of course, I don't know the number and there are a lot of things we have to talk about, but.
Yep, I can't give you an exact number, um, but I, I believe because we're not looking for a, a station location study and some, a bunch of other things added to it, it's simply what's the appropriate level of staffing for a city like Roseville with our call volume and our different, you know, dynamics. I believe that that number would likely be in the 25 to $40,000 range for a study. And then that's just kind of guessing and getting a wide, uh, guess.
Well, and one of the things I did as, as part of preparing for this was I took these, the six sort of peer departments and took their averages, and then I divided those into our call volume. And that sort of gets you to looking at probably, you know, rather than six minimum, probably nine minimum. And then when you talked about this year being even 10% or so more than the prior year, that would actually get you up to nine to 10 as a minimum. And then once again, get up to one, one additional apparatus probably, so. You know, I think that may just be a starting point for analysis is, is that, you know, and just based on those numbers, it seems pretty straightforward. Especially, you know, looking at Maplewood and what they're, what they're doing and they're being intentional about it. You know, so, you know, my mind starts to go to, okay, what does that look like for an annual budget change to the department for staffing side of it? And then what do we want to look at in terms of how we, how we handle the apparatus piece of it with our existing CIP? And how do we work that in? I don't know if we're at a point where we should, you know, the next piece of information is, what does that look like? But I'd be curious as to, as to maybe what your thought is as to what the next piece of information coming back is and, and, and council reaction to what I was suggesting. So anybody can jump in.
Can you tell us again what you're looking for?
Well, I mean, I was, I was saying, I was saying maybe even.
Sorry, it was just out there.
So it, it, as a separate thing from looking at the 2025 budget, which we're going to be doing soon enough anyway, is to have a specific look at what would the 2024 budget be if we were at, you know, nine to 10, you know, minimum staffing level and the appropriate apparatus? You know, what, what does that jump us to immediately? And then we can talk about, you know, if we want to try to transition there over time. And, and looking at, I know we did a SAFER grant over three years for the last transition, you know, then we can have some conversations. I think that might be a, a starting point anyway of some information we can react to. But if it's, you know, if that's not what council's looking for at this point, then we can do something different too.
I mean, to me, a SAFER grant would really helped us get from where we were to where we are. So it helped us with that funding source. You know, we've talked about different apparatus in the past and, you know, our new gold mine, uh, fire engine that's being built somewhere somehow. But just, you know, making sure.
Just north of here.
Yeah. Well, so many places it could be. Anyway, um, so just, I mean, I think, I don't see that, I would think this was going to be a transition regardless. We're not going to just add three per, three people per shift as a minimum staffing and ready to go. So I would think we'd have to look at, you know, building into that maybe. And if we had another opportunity, if we were able to achieve another SAFER grant where we could kind of help us grow into that, that's going to make it a lot easier on budget and a lot easier sell. I mean, I think, you know, to go from where we were 10 years ago to where we are now, there's certain people in the population who respond to us quite regularly, who will have a lot of questions about how we get.
Well, I think there's.
I'll disagree with that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I think there's, you know, some truth to that. I, I see it as a transition time. We're not going to jump from here to there. But on the other hand, when I do talk to residents, I don't hear anyone saying they want to cut the fire department. That's my experience. So I think they want us to have delivery of services, they understand all those things. So it's just a matter of us preparing and doing it in a way that makes sense. I would agree with Mayor's analysis. Those are kind of the things that we're looking at about like doing the numbers that we do. But I appreciate that approach.
There's more than one way to get.
Yes.
Councilmember Shos.
Well, actually I got a couple of questions. One, did Maplewood do a study?
They did not, no. They, they had meetings with their, with their council city management.
And then what they're going to be doing, is that actually enough to help them fix what they're trying to do? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if we're basing this on like Maplewood's numbers, is that a good number to base it on? I mean, is that enough, do you think in their situation that that's looking at what they're doing?
They're going one more apparatus.
Yeah, yeah, is that, I mean, do you think, I mean, is that?
But then they get well below the peers, it would seem.
Yeah, well, and that's, I just want to make sure if we're, what we're using for comparative, that it's enough or it's adequate to use as our baseline. So, does that, does Maplewood's model seem to make sense to you guys? Or is that, or are they just barely keeping up as well than even adding that?
They're barely keeping up as well. Now, the, the one piece about the Maplewood that's important to note is that they do full transport. So, you know, our window of time on an EMS call is 15 to 30 minutes. Their window of time on an EMS call is 45 to 65 minutes. So, so they have a unit that's going to be out of service down at regions for an extra 10 or 15 minutes where our crew gets to clear and, and come back, uh, to the fire station. So, so there, that is, um, that'll, so that will be very helpful to them by adding that, that fifth piece of, of apparatus. It'll help them pretty significantly.
From a model perspective, one of the things that Maplewood has done, when we talk about the strategic plan that they're working on, they're continually working towards those SAFER grants, but I think last year was a great example. There was like $1.5 billion in requests and $330 million in awards. And so they, they are writing a grant each and every year during their implementation timeline, but strategically are just simply saying, uh, if we don't get a grant, that's fine, uh, not desired, but we're going to add this each year to get to where that end goal is. And so there, there is a difference in terms of how their model rolls out the door. But they certainly are struggling with that call volume increase like we are too.
Councilmember Shon.
So if by magic, we said, hey, you can have 10 new people for next year. What is the likelihood, given the labor market, that we could find 10 people who wanted to have a job?
We put a lot of work into it. I, I think we could, I mean, I, I think they're out there. While the, I think the, the pool is more shallow than it maybe used to be in, on the, the fire and EMS side of things, I think that there's still, there's people out there. We had, um, a hiring process recently, had a, a fair amount of candidates. We also have a kind of an ongoing, uh, lateral opening for people that are already firefighters, paramedics or firefighters EMTs that we're getting, uh, interest in. So I, I, I don't think that, I shouldn't say I don't think it'll be difficult, it will be, but we, we can find, uh, 10 quality, you know, candidates.
I mean, I, I think the labor market has changed significantly in the last six months. There are more candidates across the board, not maybe pre-pandemic levels, but there are definitely.
It may require a little more creativity too. Um, and I've had these conversations with my peers, both in, uh, White Bear and Maplewood and Oakdale, about how do we look at this long-term? You know, most of the suburban departments used to be able to hire people with two to six years of experience in the fire service, and that can be varying, it could be paid on call, part-time, so on and so forth. But, uh, we're all sort of looking at the same challenge right now of being able to have people who come in fully trained up and really well experienced. And, and that creativity is, well, maybe we have to start looking at how do we bring people on board that don't have that experience and we get them their initial training and get them through those first steps, uh, more similar to what, uh, like a St. Paul or Minneapolis does, where they're not looking for people with experience, they're looking for people with interest and they will take care of the rest. And so if you were to say, go hire 10 or 12 or 14, or collectively three departments are going to hire 24, we would probably need to be more creative than we had in the past. But I'm pretty confident we could get to the same end goal, just might look a little different than it has.
It might have to take a little bit more time too. You know, a perfect example of, of Maplewood's hiring is, you know, similar to our cadet program, Maplewood is hiring people that are just paramedics, no fire service experience necessary, and they're getting them through their, their fire training. So it's just changing your, your outlook on how you do hiring and how you onboard, uh, new people. So I think that's definitely out there for us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Eton.
I have a couple of questions. One ties back to our friends in Maplewood. I assume they are hiring above what we see in the demo, uh, the graphics you provided to be able to add another apparatus? There's, their minimum is nine right now, they're going to need more than that to run five.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, they're hiring, I can't remember the exact total, but it was, I think, in total 12 to bring that other piece of equipment online. And then support their overall staffing too.
Sure, so my other question then, whether it's theirs or others, how many would you say the maximum staffing would need to be to actually maintain, say, the mayor's to, uh, uh, number of nine? They have 11 here, other places seem to have a three-person, by the time you get to that nine, 10 range, some are looking at a three-person gap sometimes with vacations and whatever, all the other things. Where would, where would you peg that number to be?
So you're saying if we, if our minimum staffing moved to nine?
Yeah.
I would say it, it would be 12, 36. Just because I think then we start to run into what I showed with the overtime slide of, if you have one injury and one parental leave, you know, and that happens on one shift, you, you have a problem there. So, um, I think 12 is probably the, that number, that max number on shift.
Thank you.
Well, I've been hesitant to jump in because, um, I wanted you to have the discussion. I think just, just to frame it up, um, the thought behind the staffing study, and it's just an idea, was, um, the fact that, you know, are we talking about phase three? You know, we had phase one, phase two, phase three, is there a phase four, is there a phase five? So try to get some semblance of maybe what the future could look like the best way we could. Because I know in the past, um, I think the, the council's, okay, we've took, taken care of this and then we're back knocking on your door right away again. So, so maybe that staffing study would allow us to have some, some foresight to say, okay, here's maybe where we're going, here's what we needed over a series of years and you can plan for it. And then built into that, if, if that staffing study is accepted, then as grant opportunities come up, we can routinely roll into it versus saying, hey, you know, there is a, an opportunity for SAFER grant, but we haven't talked about our staffing for a while, so we got to gear all that up. In fact, we missed this cycle because we needed to spend a lot more time, uh, talking about this internally and, and then bringing it forward, uh, to you. Uh, I think we would certainly intend to utilize SAFER grant as much as we can to help ease the transition. I think, you know, if we get to, um, a minimum staffing of, of nine, you know, 12 is probably the number. We obviously can't do that in one or two years, it may be it's over a series of years. But if we kind of have that laid out, that could help us plan for the future. So that was the idea behind it. Certainly if you want to deal with it in the short term and just help now and, you know, add two to three firefighters, uh, just to help along the way. And I would say too, that would not necessarily be part of the 25 budget. As I see it, it'd be, okay, we're planning to do this, apply for SAFER grant in '25, so we get it in '26. I think there is some serious need, uh, right now, and they're, they're making it work, but that can't be sustained forever. So there's, something needs to be done. So we could take a short-term look and just try to get that process rolling sooner. The staffing study would give us a more of a, a longer view so we can be set up in the future and kind of know our path and not have to come back and start again on the conversation, just kind of refresh the conversation each time based on the staffing study and the reality out there. So that's why it's in front of you tonight that way.
Well, that's a valid point, and so I appreciate bringing that up. I was, I was going to say something along those lines. Uh, Councilmember Eton.
I guess the counter, I guess maybe I have some skepticism of about how much new stuff we're going to discover versus, hey, we need firefighters. Is a study done before we started phase two would have told us we need a couple more firefighters, we're set, right? So are we going to do a, a study every three or four years, right? I mean, I, I don't know where, where that endpoint is versus looking at some of this data, which is quite clear, um, showing there's an increased need, um, both for the community as well as the health of our firefighters, right? So, um, I guess, I don't, I don't know. We could spend a lot of time getting a study done and then they're going to say, we need more firefighters. We're going to say, yes, and then three years from now, we might need to look at it again, so.
But I think that longer range look is, it would be important to do at this point. I would say whether it's done as a study by a third party or whether we say, let's take a 20-year look at where we need to be, or whatever the time period is, 15 years or whatever it is. And we try to figure out if there is going to be a phase four or whatever, that we start to already kind of know what that's going to look like. You know, I, I think whether it's 10% a year or 5% a year, it's somewhere in that range. And we don't necessarily see where that trend is going to start to, to, to wane. So, um, you know, maybe for at least the foreseeable future, we are talking about a couple of rounds of this. And maybe it's good to already start having those conversations and thinking about planning for that as part of what we're doing now, especially if you're talking about, um, you know, whatever we do in '25 to try to address any immediate needs. But certainly as we program something in, if you're talking about for '26, uh, Mr. Trudgeon, then, or '26 and onward, then, you know, that's where we can really have, have the benefit of, of a longer range look like we do on our CIP.
Well, I was, the only thing I, I was going to say is, you know, in my conversations with the city manager, the one pro that we're leaning on towards more of a, a study is, while maybe all five of you are generally warm to the idea of more firefighters, not all five of you will be, may, maybe be here next year and two years and three years from now. And so we felt that the study at least allows future councils to see that we've done the homework and we have something in place, um, you know, that, that we can work off of for, for years in the future. But that, that was the, the main reason behind the study is just, uh, consistency, um, in place.
Councilmember Graff.
And so I don't really see this as an either/or thing. I think that.
I think that probably both should be going on because we seem to be convinced that we need more firefighters soon. But the study, I think my trepidation with the study is, we've done lots of studies, it seems like to me. And, you know, you get varying amounts of useful information from them, and it's good for a year. And then, you know, the longer out a study goes, the less accurate that information is going to be. That's just the nature of studies. So, but I do think we have, if we could find someone that we thought was really going to give us good information and something that was out at least five to 10 years would be helpful, as you said, to use, to justify what we're doing and to also go to the future for people looking at it.
Probably it would have to be 10 years because our transition probably just ends at the end of five years, this round. And then we're
The further out you go, the less accurate the data.
Well, no, I understand. But yeah, I think the demographic trends seem pretty well-established out there in the world of looking at those statistics. We've got a fairly good sense, I would say. And we know that the Met Council's projection for the population of the city of Roseville for 2050, I think it is, was in the neighborhood of 40,000, and we're about 36, 37, whatever we are now. So, we can sort of work that into the equation a little bit, too. And that gets to, I think, Councilmember Strawn's talking about, you know, what we plan for in development and what we're being asked to plan for as part of that picture as well. So, I think we have information that we can use. It might be worth having another conversation about a study, maybe if we can, if you want to have some initial conversations with people who might do that, and they can talk about what it is and sort of what that cost looks like. And then we can sort of maybe make some determinations. But I think, at least as a starting point, we are sort of at that, at that point of saying we need to do something, anyway. Councilmember Schroder, and I apologize for continuing to skip over you.
Yes, I was going to say.
He's going to throw that pen.
Oh, no, we're getting into medical services. Standby.
Councilmember Schroder.
Actually, short-term needs are different from long-term needs. And since we're talking about strategic planning and, you know, 2040 plan and some of these, we've done studies on all of that. Short-term needs, I think the council does a really good job, like how many people we might need for next year. That's great. I think we all do a good job. But strategic planning and long-term planning, maybe not so much. We're as good with that side of it. And so, I do like the idea of a study, if you, and that was the point, if you find someone who can do it well. Because I do know we've had, and I think Councilmember Graff talked about that, we've had some studies that not so good, you know? And it was kind of a waste of time and money. So, that would be really, who you end up hiring would make a big difference. But I do think we're talking two different things. Short-term, yes, we probably need to do something. But if we're looking long-term, that needs to be part of our strategic and our 2040 plan and all of that. That needs to be incorporated in, like you say, long-term. And I do like the idea of maybe going out and seeing what's available and finding out what would they do and come back and say, we've talked to some consultants. Here are the things, the deliverables that they would give us. And so, if we, I think if that's the kind of information we may need to make the decision.
I would appreciate that. Councilmember Strawn.
I fully agree with, I don't think it's a, it's a both and. And I really appreciate Councilmember Schroder's comments. I, given the additional information, we, we could all be different, these people in this spot. And eventually, that will happen. But I think it's really good if we can have that strategy and be strategic about what moves forward. I think it's helpful because if we're talking about, you know, what happens with this inspector, you know? Let, if someone really knows the field and can provide us really decent deliverable and gives us some ideas, it helps us plan for budgeting and for all of those things. But I do think it sounds like we do need to have also some short-term remedies. So, and I know it's hard to spend money because we don't know what we're going to get. But I also think if we didn't have a study done before phase two, I think we can only be so smart without some experts. And so, hopefully, we can find an expert or a team of experts who can guide us for at least five to 10 years down the road so we can start budgeting. And when those RFPs, you know, when those grants come open, we know what we're looking for, and we have a plan. And it's just like in the back, you know, of the file cabinet, ready to go. If we have to make it up, it just takes so much staff time and everything. And then we just kind of sound a little discombobulated. I think we would just bring a lot better plan moving forward if we know what that is. And if it's a new piece of equipment, well, then we can plan for it, and we can cycle it in the life cycle of all of the other things. And it's not just a small amount. It's when you start thinking of all the pieces that go to it, it's, there's a lot of building blocks that go into that.
I think we've got some pretty good guidance there.
Yeah, so we'll do some more research and get some more information with deliverables and the companies will bring that back to make a decision then whether or not to go forward with the staffing study. This conversation was really helpful. We appreciate the opportunity to inform you. And I think we all know we need to do something here now. It's just kind of putting those pieces together. We have some thoughts on the short-term strategy as well, but certainly the long-term study perhaps could help us on that. So, appreciate the time.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, the dog's
I was going to
We may be in need of Ash's time.
She was here earlier, and just a quick update before I step away. She had a very big milestone last week. She passed her service dog certification. So, it is step one, but it is a huge milestone for us. And so, we're pretty excited about that. Much training to come still, but she is an official service dog, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Onward and upward.
Give her a treat.
Did she get donuts?
She got a pup cup. With them all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda items. Mr. Trudgeon, can you go through and give us a rundown of items A through C and E, F, and G?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 10A approves payments in the amount of $1,630,945.78. Item 10B approves several expenditures that include replacement of a 20-year-old boiler and rooftop air conditioning units that serve the police department portion of City Hall, removal of a 60-year-old fence at the water tar site on Fairview, and installation of a new fence, and replacement of a window coverings, or the window coverings at the skating center that are 15 years old. Item 10C approves two temporary gambling licenses, one for Minnesota Diversified Industries, who will be holding a raffle at Par 365 on June 27. The other will be for the Roseville VFW Auxiliary that will be holding a raffle on June 29. Item 10D was moved to June 3, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 10E approves awarding contract to WSB to prepare for the city for pond maintenance projects. The work will include survey of pond bottoms, pond inlets and outlets, elevations and recommendations for maintenance activities and cost estimates, and also a sediment analysis to determine disposal options. Requests for quotes were sent out to several firms with only WSB submitting a quote for $23,700. Staff has reviewed the quote and found its costs are in line with similar work by the contractor. Agenda item 10F approves entering into a memorandum of understanding with the property owner at 2377 County Road B for temporary construction easement to law for the construction of a new off-road pathway that connects to the new city park on County Road B. The cost for the temporary easement is $750. The last item is item 10G, which approves two resolutions changing the minimum assessed value agreements for the Oasis and Harbor multifamily housing developments. The council serving as the EDA reviewed this request and approved the amendment at the May 13 EDA meeting. State statutes now require the city council approve these agreements. That is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent items?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Strawn. I started to combine your names there. With that, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved or accepted. That then brings us to the future agenda review. Mr. Trudgeon, once again?
Yes, on June 3, we have several items on the agenda. We'll have the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for the hearing regarding the fence located in the right-of-way at 257 South McCarran's Boulevard. Do have two additional right-of-way vacations. We also consider approval of an ordinance creating the, quote, Equity and Inclusion Commission. I think the name will still be sorted out, but that's what we're calling it for now. Look to award the contract for recycling carts, potentially approve 2024, 25 city manager goals, and we'll also review the results of the community survey at that meeting. On the 17th, we'll have an all-department equity update, a joint meeting with the Finance Commission, and then discuss the legislative impacts related to the city budget. I'm not sure there was a lot that was done in the end, and city council priorities for the budget coming up. And if there are any midterm commission vacancies, which I don't believe there are any of the existing commissions, obviously, we'll have a process for the new commission we create. Just a reminder, on June 24, there is the Rosefest Parade in place of our meeting. On July 8, these agendas will be filled out a little bit more when we get closer to that. But we do look to issue the RFP for recycling services, do that. And then the July 15 meeting, halfway through summer, we're looking at the EDA budget. And then at the work session, look at the capital improvement budget. So, we'll get in high gear for the budget season here soon enough. And that is the future agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions on the upcoming agendas or future agenda items initiated by councilmembers? Writing reports or announcements?
Just if I could, Mr. Mayor, as you know, the legislative session ended. No bonding bill was passed. That means no Oval, no kids in need as well. Don't know if there's going to be any special sessions. It seems like everybody's pretty angry at each other right now. So, we'll see if anything turns out. But it's really not much of anything there were. Some changes to the cannabis law. Not exactly sure how that affects municipalities. I did see some communication earlier today from Community Development Director Gunlock that we expect to start seeing draft model ordinances, perhaps as early as July, coming from the state. So, we'll start looking at that and bringing that forward. I think the goal is still to allow retail sales of cannabis starting in 2025, so just as a heads up on that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that update. Next on our agenda, we have a potential closed executive session for the purpose of evaluating the one employee that reports to the city council, which is Mr. Trudgeon, our city manager, who, I was just thinking about it, he has five bosses. I think there's a movie that references that somewhere out there. But anyway, the state law requires city councils to hold our business in public and be accessible to the public in all cases except for a small number of exceptions. One of those exceptions in Minnesota Statutes 13D.05 is for the evaluation of the performance of a personnel who is subject to the council's authority. One of the things that's in that statute is that we need to give the employee the opportunity to have that session in a public open session at their option. So, I'll check. Mr. Trudgeon, do you wish to have the employee evaluation held in an open session?
I do not.
Okay.
We have lots of things to say, though.
Not availing yourself of that opportunity, then. In accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.05, exceptions to the open meeting law, it would be appropriate for a motion to go into a closed executive session. And before we do that, just a couple of housekeeping notes. We do the evaluation of the city manager in a completely separate room. We will not come back to the chambers, even though we are required to reopen before we officially adjourn the meeting. We will not come back to the chambers or come back on camera to do that, those two steps. So, for members of the public who are watching at home or who are here in the chambers, once we go into the closed executive session, that will be kind of the end of the action here in the council chambers, but certainly not for the city manager and the council. With that, is there a motion to, per State Statutes 13D.05, exceptions to the open meeting law, go into a closed executive session for the purpose of reviewing the performance of city manager?
So, move.
Moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Ratten. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we will adjourn to closed executive session.